One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, please.
Mr. Al.
Here.
Mr. Beistock.
Here.
Mr. Colera.
Here.
Mr. Fry.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Shipley.
Here.
Mr. Benz.
Let it be known that Mr. Benz is someplace on his way to Michigan right now, so he will not be with us. We have no citizen comments. Okay, minutes.
It's recommended that the board approve the minutes of the June 2nd discussion meeting, June 9th voting meeting, and June 16th budget voting meeting.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, no.
No, all in favor, right?
Yeah.
Yes, well, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay, that passes.
All right, uh, there's no... We have nothing under business and finance this evening because of the 4th of July holiday and the earliness of the board meeting, the bank statements have not come yet, so we were unable to provide a treasurer's report for you.
Before we get started, can I make a comment on all business when you get to it?
Sure.
Now?
Yep, I guess, she's the president tonight.
You got it right again.
Before any motions made, I'd like to ask this board to take a good, hard look at what we've seen, what we've heard, and take some time to think, do we really want to go somewhere that's going to get us in deeper financial?
I'd like to piggyback a little bit on Ken. When we had done and looked at the different options, one of the options we'd looked at was option three, which we said had some viability, but there were some issues with that as far as expenses for additional teachers and doing some manipulation with the grades and things. And Jack had graciously provided some data concerning that, and it came out to like a $25,000 to $75,000 loss by making that type of a conversion, by moving the eighth grade over to the high school. Unfortunately, the figures were from 2011 and '12 on the savings, so I'm thinking the $25,000 to $75,000 was not the exact amount of the loss that we would suffer. But even more significant is the fact that we weren't even looking at the fact that if we keep that building, we are looking at a $200,000 payment every year, and it won't be all for that, but the majority of it will be for that, to renovate that building. Because that's what the Johnson Control Study showed we would spend in this district to renovate all of our buildings, and as you all know, the majority of the renovation for energy efficiency is going to be going into that building. So, yes, maybe on the surface of that, there might be a loss initially, but not when you consider the expenses that we're going to have to upgrade that building so that it functions the way we would like it to function, as opposed to closing the building. And another factor which wasn't considered, and I don't know why that wasn't in there, is that we are moving from having elementary school teacher two through five. You're putting K-1 and 1 in there, do we need another principal? Can we eliminate a principal position? Would we not be able to run the principal position from K-1 through K-4 or 5, and then the middle school from that point to 7, and then 8's going to be at the high school? You would eliminate a principal's position, which is a considerable savings.
You would, just bear in mind, you have a half a principal now, and the other half of his job are doing a lot of the work from the eliminated assistant superintendent position that we've already cut.
So we'd only need half of him then? Because we wouldn't need him as a principal, and we'd only need half of his position, which then wouldn't pay the same salary we're paying him now, which would be additional savings. Unless you're planning on having three principals in the same building for K-1, K through 7, if we did that, you'd have three principals for that, all those students. So again, all I'm saying is that there's a lot of extra money here, simply voting with going option 1, because once we do that, we have committed to saving that building, and once we've committed to doing that, we've committed to renovating that building. And then as a board, we've committed to the expense, even though we haven't voted on it, we've committed the expense of doing all the money work that's required to upgrade that building, boilers, air conditioning, doors, windows, whatever we're doing. And as I said, you know Johnson Control came in with their estimates, and the majority of the money was spent on that building. It wasn't on the high school, it wasn't on this facility, it was on that facility. So, bear that in mind.
The only thing I can't understand is, what happened to us getting rid of Rustle to put the money into that school?
Wasn't discussed. Another option, certainly another option there.
That's an option.
It is an option, but it wasn't discussed.
I'd like to keep everything into this with the primary center right there, and the longer we wait on these projects, the board's going to cost down the road, a year from now, two years from now, and if we're going to do anything, we should do it, as far as I'm concerned, now.
And I agree, Butch.
And the students at that school deserve what we're going to give them.
And then as a board, we are voting to commit $200,000, I mean, I'm looking at their figure. Loan payment for the next 20 years is $200,000 a year. That's what we're committing when we say that. Now, that's for all the buildings, I agree, but the majority of that is going to be placed into that building. So voting to say we take option 1, which means we keep the primary center and keep everything exactly the way it is, is the same as voting to spend all that money right now.
The only trouble is we have another option, and like I said, we've got to talk about getting rid of...
But once you vote to take option 1, you've taken it off the table, Butch.
Gentlemen, could I suggest that we consider tabling this and having administration doing a little bit more investigation as to bringing some things up to date?
I don't want to rush into this either, but the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost.
Oh, you're right, I know, but I don't...
And I really think we should look at this getting rid of Rustle School, because it is a rental property, and it needs work done, it needs water done. Get rid of it and put the money in the primary center to have everything centrally let me...
But we don't know how much that is, and once you vote for this option right now, if you vote that, it doesn't matter what happens with Rustle. If you get nothing for Rustle, if you can't sell Rustle, if you don't have to fix Rustle, it doesn't matter, you've committed a lot of money to SPC, and that's what you voted on tonight.
Okay, Mr. Al.
I think Eccles fill us in a lot of ways on that study, like Butch said, that was his option. Another option, and I see it every day, I never paid any attention to it before, but everywhere I go, it's junior, senior high. You know, we're talking about configurations and bringing teachers and having them have to leave here to go there. If it's a junior, senior high, which is very appropriate and commonplace, then that is an option that we must look at. And one of the things that Eccles said that I think is a fallacy is there's an uptick in population. Anybody who lives here knows that that hasn't happened in decades. And right now, you can drive down any street in Scottsdale and find a house or sale. Parents with young kids are not flooding Scottsdale. So before we do any of this stuff, we need to take a long, hard look. One of the things we might even consider doing since we spent $10,000 on that study is form a group amongst ourselves to go through out these three schools, the elementary, not elementary, the elementary, the middle, and the high school. See what rooms and what configurations we can come up with in the next 30 to 45 days and do our own study.
Well, then, do, I mean, we have it on here, do we want to make a motion to table this?
Just one more thing before I shut my mouth.
Go ahead.
How many students do we have enrolled in kindergarten as of right now? I understand it's 106 children enrolled in the kindergarten because of the primary center. Am I right or wrong?
I don't have those figures right now. Charlie, do you know what the enrollment figure for kindergarten is?
I may have it. Around what I had on mine was 1/3 or something right now. And if that's not counting, there could be something that was from the, you know, I still haven't got the summer numbers yet.
We generally get 30 to 40 more after that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, here we are, we're getting in, you're talking about a lot of people coming to the school, here you're already starting 130 children coming into the primary center for kindergarten, and we've got to do something.
Well, how many are there now?
Huh?
How many are there now?
I don't know.
Well, it's safe, 130 maybe, might be less.
It's not changing much, and what I'm saying is, if...
They're hovering above .50.
There was a time we actually had a few more students because something closed.
Do I have to read this?
I mean, is that an accurate way to say we had an influx of students? No, it was because our school closed its doors, and we wound up taking in the students, so, I mean, we've got to look at it.
Is anybody interested then in making a motion to table this until we get more information, until maybe we do something like Mr. Al mentioned, or whatever?
I think we do need to table it until we give more consideration. Again, it's not so much that it's the option, it's that the option leads us to something else automatically, and I think we need to discuss that, because once we do this, we have, we've committed. We cannot leave that building, if we're going to leave the students there, we can't leave it in the condition it's in. Something will have to be done with it. We have then committed the money at this time.
Could you then put that in the form of a formal...
I make a motion that we table this motion to adopt option 1.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll, I'll say.
Okay, then we need a roll call.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistock?
Right.
Mr. Colera?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Passes, what, 7, 1, 0.
Right.
Okay, all right, then we move on.
Okay, then Johnson Controls, we'd also need a motion to table that, because without any resolution to the first item, the second item becomes moot.
Okay, do I have a motion to table the second item there, Johnson Controls?
I make a motion to table the Johnson Control issue.
Mr. Colero, does this have a motion? Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fry, roll call please.
I have a comment, Charlie.
Yes.
Well, you kept saying the amount of money we need to spend for this, but that would be totally up to us. I know you kept saying $200,000 a year, but ultimately, they tell us what we need, needs done, and then we say yes or no, so whatever buildings we need to, you know...
Well, you're right, Jason, but I looked at their report, and the majority of the upgrades, and they were necessary upgrades, they weren't frills.
Yes.
Like I said, you're talking about boilers, you're talking about air conditioning, you're talking about redoing, those were expensive items. Again, they are the biggest savers of money for the building, but they also the biggest expenses, and that's the building that needs the majority of the work. So yeah, I agree, it's not all of it, and we would get to pick and choose, but again, it's...
Well, that's what I'm going to say, we can pick and choose what we want.
We can.
Leave that building by itself, leave everything else alone.
But if we did that building by itself, and let's say it cost us $100,000 instead of the $200,000 a year, then the $25,000 to $75,000 we thought we'd lose by changing the configuration, we've now gained $25,000, or...
I agree, but that's what we need to start.
Right, exactly, that's why we table.
You guys know how I feel about the primary center, I mean, you know, I don't want to close it.
Right.
So, I mean, I think our work needs to be done.
Okay, we have a...
I made the motion.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Fry made, okay, could we please have a roll call?
Mr. Beistock?
Yes.
Mr. Colera?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Passes 8, 0.
Before we go into new business, I have to apologize, I was remiss in not introducing Mr. Ron Haichu to you this evening. Mr. Haichu is our psychologist and people services director, came to us from the IU, started on July 1. So Ron, welcome aboard, we're happy to have you. And I apologize for not doing that earlier, sir.
Thank you. Okay, new business, the Meadows.
It's recommended that the board approve an agreement for educational services that would be provided by the Meadows School for the 2016-17 school year. The Meadows is a mental health facility in the central part of the state, and they ask most districts in our region to agree, just in the event that a psychiatrist would refer a student there for a hospitalization program. We've had this agreement in place now for several years, and we haven't had a student there yet, but in the event that someone would get sent there, we do need an agreement so the child could be educated.
Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Colero, and second by Mrs. Love. Roll call please.
Mr. Colera?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistock?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes 8, 0.
What is this, Southwestern Pennsylvania Human Services?
Right, it's recommended that the board approve Behavioral Health Memorandum of Agreement with Southwestern PA Human Services Incorporated for the 16-17 school year. This is not a financial agreement, it's more an agreement of how we do business with one another.
Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fry, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Colero, roll, excuse me, roll call please.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistock?
Yes.
Mr. Colera?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes 8, 0.
The renewal of the contract with Source for Teachers.
It's recommended that the board renew the contract with Source for Teachers for the provision of substitute teachers for the 2016-17 school year at the same markup rate as in the previous contract.
Do I have a motion on this?
Do we have to wait till a motion's made to make comments?
Do we make comments?
Yes.
So moved.
Who is that?
Butch.
Mr. Butch, Mr. Beistock, sorry. Mr. Beistock, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Colero, question on the motion?
Is it going to get better? Because last year, they were horrible. We went, our kids went without having classes, they went without having teachers, we had to pull teachers from other classes.
Right. I hope it's going to get better. That was not a Source for Teachers problem. Other districts who do not have Source for Teachers are having the same issues. It's a substitute shortage problem, that the people just aren't out there that are subbing right now, the sub pool is shrinking. At your last meeting, you voted to increase the pay for substitute teachers. I'm pretty confident that will help, because I've had many substitutes say to me, why would I come here for $80 when I can go to Greensburg Salem for $100? Makes perfect sense. So our rates are now competitive with that of other districts, so I'm hoping that helps to relieve that situation. If it doesn't, at this time next year, or actually before this time, I'll be coming and recommending to you that we go back in-house.
When we were in-house, we had a much higher rate of filling, as I remember.
Yeah, we still had issues, but our rate was better then, yes.
And when you said that about them not being a problem, in actuality, they are. If they're signing a contract with us to provide us with the service, then they should provide the service.
Right.
There should be a penalty, and they should be refunding us something. You either do the job that you were hired to do, or you don't.
It's like Starbucks not having coffee, right?
Right, exactly. Now, is there any way we can get out of this once we get into it, if it doesn't turn into the better?
I believe so, and Mr. Potonic, I think you would...
I think there's a provision where we have to give advance notice, I don't know if it's 30, 60 days.
60 days, I believe it's 60 days.
60 days, 2 months. Any other comments?
One of the questions I might have, and it's certainly applicable to what Ken is saying, I mean, if they're having problems filling, and that's their contract, are they still out there soliciting schools to get on board with them? I mean, the more schools they get on board, obviously, the more difficult it is for them to meet...
To my knowledge, they're not soliciting in this area right now. They're soliciting substitutes in this area right now.
Right, but they're not soliciting schools to join on to Source for Teachers. Because I said, if they are, then they are, they are certainly selling us a bill of goods, because they're just looking for us to sign on and not actually providing services.
And again, there are districts that don't have Source for Teachers that are having the very same problems.
Same problems, too.
This year, it became a big issue, there were even hearings on it in Harrisburg in front of the legislature.
Well, they actually voted, did they make the vote on that to allow student teachers, if you're in college and you have 60 credits, you will be allowed to be a substitute?
Right, yeah, there's a route for non-certificated people to get emergency permits. We haven't gone there yet, I want people in the classrooms that know how to handle classrooms, know how to teach content. I don't necessarily want untrained people in the classrooms.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Love?
No.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
No.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistock?
Yes.
Mr. Colera?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Okay, passes what, 6, 2, 0.
Right.
Okay. Okay, 2016-17 school calendar.
It's recommended that the board authorize administration to make the following change on the 2016-17 school calendar, simply making snow day number 4 on April 18, which would be tacked on to the end of the Easter break, and making this snow day number 1 at the end of the year. That would mirror the calendar we had this year, just seems to make better sense.
Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Mentioned by Mrs. Rhodes, a second? Second by Mr. Fry, roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistock?
Yes.
Mr. Colera?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes 8, 0.
Renewal of articulation agreement with the Indiana University of Pennsylvania.
Every so many years, universities are required to renew their agreements with school districts who host student teachers, and it's recommended the board renew its articulation agreement with Indiana University of Pennsylvania for the hosting of student teachers.
Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Colero, second?
Right.
Second by Mr. Beistock, roll call please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistock?
Yes.
Mr. Colera?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes 8, 0.
Review and affirmation of bullying policy.
Flow-through funds.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Approval of 2016-2017 IDEA flow-through funds contract.
It's recommended that the board approve an agreement with West One Intermediate Unit for the use and distribution of IDEA flow-through funds. This is an annual event, and these are the monies that flow through the intermediate unit to the school district. They're allowable for certain expenditures, and it's the contract that says we will follow the rules and you'll give us the money.
Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Love, second by Mr. Colero, roll call please.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistock?
Yes.
Mr. Colera?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes, passes 8, 0.
Okay, now review and affirmation of bullying policy.
Yeah, the school code requires the district's bullying policy to be reviewed every three years, this is our year. I've attached a copy of the policy, and it's recommended that the board reaffirm the district's bullying policy, number 249. I'm thinking that policy will change a little bit, you know, when the PSBA gets to the 200th section of our board policies, but for now, I think what we have is adequate.
Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, any questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistock?
Yes.
Mr. Colera?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes 8, 0.
The October 13, 2016 voting board meeting.
Right, this meeting conflicts with the PSBA conference in Hershey. It's recommended that the board change the date of the October 13, 2016 voting meeting. Your options there would be to move it to a different date, or if you would like, we could do it as we're doing tonight and have one meeting in October on the 6th.
Do we need a recommendation on this, or do we just need...
It's up to the board to suggest, make a motion, discuss.
I make a motion, we have it on the same night.
All in one day.
All in one day.
Oh, okay, okay, there's a motion.
The voting meeting and the planning session all help on October the 6th.
It'll be October the 6th, right.
Okay, so the motion's on the floor that we do everything on October the 6th. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Second, Mr. Polakowski?
That doesn't cause any problems for you?
No.
Okay.
The only thing is, your treasurer's report probably won't be ready, it's early in the month, but other than that...
Any discussion? All right, roll call please.
Mr. Colera?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistock?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes 8, 0.
I need a motion to recess, to executive session for personnel reasons.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes.[1469.91]
Any tax litigation?
No. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Beisel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? We will adjourn, uh, recess. Okay, we are, what's the word? Reconvened!
Need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're reconvened. Okay, let's go on here. Life skills teacher.
It's recommended that the Board hire Judy Hansler as a life skills teacher at Southmoreland Elementary School. That's step B fifteen of the collective bargaining unit pursuant to the transfer of entities law. And B fifteen is a salary of seventy-four thousand five seventy-one.
May I have a motion on this? Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Claro. Correct, please have a roll call.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beisel?
Yeah.
Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. Business manager contract.
It is recommended that the Board renew the business manager's contract per the terms and conditions agreed upon by the business manager and the committee of the Board.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Claro, second by Mrs. Rhodes. Is there a discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beisel?
Yes.
Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. Resignation of middle school autistic support teacher.
It is recommended that the Board accept the resignation of Anthony Grease as middle school autistic support teacher.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Love, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beisel?
Yeah.
Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. Employment of middle school autistic support.
It is recommended that the Board employ Kendra Cowan of Scottsdale, Pennsylvania, as the middle school autistic support teacher at a salary of forty-two thousand six hundred thirty dollars, which is step M one of the collective bargaining agreement.
Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fry, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love. Question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beisel?
Yeah.
Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. Resignation of high school French/Spanish teacher.
It's recommended that the Board accept the resignation of Joanna Harrington as the high school French and Spanish teacher and authorize administration to advertise the position and will add with regrets, as she did a really nice draw for us while she was here.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mr. Beisel. Is there a question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beisel? Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. Marching band.
We're going to put a lot of things into one motion here, folks. It's recommended that the Board approve the following marching band supplementals for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. Elena Kaufman is brass instructor with a supplemental salary of one thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars. Dustin Miller percussion instructor at the same supplemental salary. Approve the following volunteers. Jessica Fasano, Brant Roberts, Sarah Thompson, Rick Firestone, Dane Schultz, Jude Gore, Carol Ann McLeod, Daniel Berescheck. And accept the resignations of the following people. Sarah Thompson is brass instructor. Jessica Fasano is woodland instructor. Carol Ann McLeod is percussion instructor. Sarah Thompson is brass instructor. And Jessica Fasano, as I guess we have her twice, is woodland instructor. We would also ask that you accept the resignation of Robert Springer as assistant band director and all of those would be effective immediately.
Okay, do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mr. Polakowski. I have a question. Are we replacing the, let me get through all this here. The woodland instructor?
Not yet.
Okay.
We may be back for that. We don't have one in place at this point.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Beisel?
Yes.
Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. Summer student helper.
It's recommended that the Board approve the employment of Grayson Kenny as a student summer helper.
Um, do I need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Love, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Roll call, please.
Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beisel? Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. Middle school football.
It is recommended that the Board open the position of middle school head football coach.
Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mrs. Love. Question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beisel? Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. Resignation of high school science teacher.
It's recommended that the Board accept with regrets the resignation of high school science teacher Lindsay DeCassola.
Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Love, second by Mr. Fry. Question, motion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
With regrets, yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beisel?
Yes.
Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. School dentists.
It is recommended that the Board reappoint Dr. Robert Clark, two fifteen North Pittsburgh Street, Conneville, PA, and Dr. Jennifer Sulligill, three twenty-two Pittsburgh Street, Scottsdale, PA, to conduct dental exams for students in grades kindergarten, three, and seven at a cost of one dollar per exam.
Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Is that Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Mr. Claro, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beisel?
Yeah.
Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. Assistant high school girls soccer coach.
It's recommended that the Board hire Erin Askin as assistant high school girls soccer coach at a supplemental salary of three thousand four hundred ninety dollars for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year and authorize administration to advertise and post the position of middle school girls soccer coach, which is the position that Erin currently holds.
Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fry, a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beisel?
Yes.
Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. Baseball.
It's recommended that the Board open the position of varsity head baseball coach.
Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Beisel, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Roll call, please.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beisel?
Yes.
Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. Granting tenure.
It's recommended that the Board grant tenure to Renee Davis, middle school English teacher.
Do I have a motion on this? Motion by Mr. Polakowski, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Claro. Question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beisel?
Yeah.
Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. Substitutes, secretarial, and cafeteria.
It is recommended that the Board approve Judith Little of Tars, Pennsylvania, and Lori Hudeck of Mount Pleasant, Pennsylvania, as day-to-day substitutes on an as-needed basis for secretarial and/or cafeteria.
Do I have a motion on this? Motion by Mr. Beisel, a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Claro?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beisel? Mrs. Shipley?
Yes, passes eight, zero. Okay, Board reports. CWCT report. WIU report.
Last week, we discussed the business manager at the IU is leaving to go back to Mount Pleasant. She was employed there before as a business manager and she went to school there and just felt like she was going home. So we do have a plan in position for a transition that is smooth. They approved the transportation and the early intervention budget for next year. We applied for IDEA. Approved retirements, resignments, and leaves. We furloughed twenty-nine people. It's very difficult. Due to alterations in the early intervention program and loss of funding, medical funding. They did create sixteen part-time positions. But it's, I mean, not everybody's going to get hired back. And they're going to be like classroom assistants or personal, personal care assistants.